Hello.
Hello.
Are you the city planner for the city of Monroe?
No, I am a developer with SGS Development.
Oh, cool.
And you?
I, I work with Metro Planning. I'm here to ask some questions to the, the city planner.
Perfect, perfect. Hopefully we'll get the city planner.
Right out.
Are you from the, up in the Portland area?
Uh, I go to school at University of Oregon, so I'm, I'm in Eugene.
Oh, okay. I have a couple of $50,000 hats from the University of Oregon after sending three kids there.
I hope, I hope they were worth it.
Yeah, one of my, let's see, journalism. And she's a stay-home mom, but has three wonderful kids and then one health, let's see, I can't remember, some health degree and she's a broker doing well. And the other one was another health degree. I don't know what they are, but so you're in urban planning?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I've got a Oregon State lady here that had sustainable housing and planning. She does a great job for us. She's a lot smarter than I am.
That's good to hear. There's, there's work out there.
Yeah, no, it's, both of those are very, very good schools. Nobody could, could ever say anything negative against either one, I'm quite honest with you.
Right now, I think we are in the meeting now.
Good.
Looks like.
Hey, we'll be starting in just a couple of minutes, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Everybody make sure their mics on.
Turn the mics on.
Make sure.
Shannon, go ahead and put your.
All right, let's call this meeting to order and let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can start to my left and go around and say your names so that it's on the record.
Torren Nielsen here.
Cupwitson present.
John Greedennis present.
David Mills present.
Tim Easteridge here.
Linda Frederick here.
Michael Bidwell here.
Shannon Cross here.
Dan Sheets here.
And.
From SGS Development.
We've got folks online. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Chet.
Chet Antson, SGS Development.
Thank you. Who's next?
Uh, I'm Harry Rail. I'm, I'm from Metro Planning.
Great. Who else?
I'm Haley Lush. I'm an agent of some owners of property in Monroe and just had a quick issue to talk about.
Okay. I think we got one other person on.
What other? It's like Serge is on?
There we go. Now we can hear you.
Okay, Serge, Serge up Pacific National Development.
Okay, welcome. We don't normally have this many online. This is gonna be kind of a.
Yes.
Shannon Cross, the newest member of the city of Monroe, just started yesterday. So, hello everyone.
So, city administrator and city reporter.
Awesome. Welcome, welcome. Good luck.
Good to have you.
Okay, let's, let's start by reviewing the minutes of June 3rd.
I don't remember calling the meeting to order. I thought it was you.
It was Fred.
I thought it was Fred.
Maybe it was me. I think I might have been running late that night.
Doesn't matter if you're not offended.
And you never offend.
Did you find anything wrong with these minutes?
I wasn't here, so I couldn't go through.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as read.
I have a motion to have a second.
We'll second that motion.
Okay, let's, all in favor of approving the minutes for June 3rd? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Okay, at this point, we're gonna take public comments. It's not really on here, but we're gonna do it. And if you could limit your comments to around three minutes or so. And, and please keep it on topic. So, I don't know if this mic is on. If not, damn, that one is on there. Do you want to just have them come up to the chair there?
Yeah, that's, it's on.
Okay. So, so we'll need to have.
Whoever's here who wants to make a comment will have.
Anybody that's in the building wanna make a comment? No. We had somebody online that had a question. Katie, was that you?
It might have been Haley.
Or Haley.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a concern I had about the property I'm talking about is 555 Depot Street. And I believe that council met and approved it December 4th of 2023. I sent the notice of public hearing to Dan Sheetz's email this afternoon. So maybe, I don't know if you guys could pull that up and review it at some point, but we just really need some kind of, like after it was approved at that hearing on December 4th, 2023, I was in contact with Steve Martinenko. And he was basically saying he would get me some formal write-up that I could show, you know, potential tenants or people interested in the property, just that that it was a conditional use for, to use it as a retail location. And I just wanted to see if we could get some resolution to that approval because we never got kind of the, like, final loose ends tied up on getting anything in writing, but we did get that approval pushed through in 2023.
So I've seen the email, but I wasn't on planning commission. So I don't know what all happened in December of 2024, so we'll have to look back. 2023, excuse me.
Yeah, we're gonna have to review those minutes. I know there was a lot of discussion. There was about the use of that space that as a mixed use for commercial and light industrial.
Right.
And I don't recall what the specifics of, I don't know what they were asking at that point. I do know that it, that we were, we did approve it to have a mixed use of commercial and light industrial, but there was gonna be some conditions on handicap and some other stuff, parking and stuff, but I don't remember all the details. I would hate to give you bad information.
Yeah, I guess I would just appreciate if y'all would review it. And then if we could get some kind of formal approval and a few conditions in writing, we've, you know, we have done some improvements per our conversations with Steve that I know you guys weren't privy to, but we're just ready to comply with whatever is necessary and would love to get some approval in writing after your review.
Okay. Well, thank you. And yeah, let's, let's see if we, yeah, do you have something, Michael?
Um, this is Michael Bidwell. I, I have a folder for it. I need to see, like, confirm that the decision letter's in there in the staff report. Just the, and that's one of the folders that's on my desk, so I can take a look at that. So I'll just have Dan forward me that email. I'm in on Tuesdays. And that'll be something I can do on Tuesday morning, next Tuesday morning. Uh, I'm here and then be able to get you like what, what, any, any next steps that you might need to do.
Sounds great. Thank you guys so much. Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're on that side or to this side.
Uh, anyone else online that wanted, makes a public comments at this time?
Uh, this, yeah, Chet Antonson, SGS Development is, are we on the agenda to discuss the North Brickworks property? If not, I have, yeah, I'd like to talk about it, but if we're on the agenda, I'll wait for it to come up on the agenda.
I don't see, I don't see you on the agenda.
Okay.
I don't know if Michael has an update. I mean, you just got back, so.
And which, which one was this? I did the brick.
Brickyard.
Brickyard.
Brickyard, yeah.
And originally we tried to do a pre-application meeting and on my side it failed because there was not enough internet connection. So it made it frustrating. So I need to work with all the people to do a pre-application meeting and see kind of like what next steps are. One thing that could be a potential obstacle, as I was looking through things, because I wanted to see where the overlay district was at and see how far it went. So the part that could be a potential, that would be an issue, I should say, is anything zoned industrial that's outside of the highway overlay district. And the reason that's And the reason that's gonna be an issue is that in Oregon land use law, I believe it's rule nine, there has to be showing the 20-year inventory of industrial lands. And if all of that is re-zoned, that's currently industrial, um, that would leave no functional supply of industrial land, so we would be in violation of Oregon land use law with recommendation of approval. Part of the property is already zoned, um, residential, so that part won't be the issue and things inside the overlay. So that'd be, um, part that, um, could, would be in discussion with a redo of the pre-op meeting. So, um, what I can do is, um, and I'll, I'll have to do it from Philomath on Thursday because I don't work Wednesdays anymore there. Uh, is to try to see if we can schedule a meeting for next Tuesday. And now I have a workaround, so I'll at least be able to do the pre-op meeting online for the people who wouldn't be able to attend. So we can discuss that further because that, that's gonna kind of change a little bit of how the scope of where things are gonna be based on that, um, site plan that I, that, um, and concept plan that I saw.
Um, just a tiny bit of history. I went back with this a long time, many years, but in this most recent iteration, I had a meeting with Steve in January, maybe early February. Uh, with the same concept plan, with the exception that I had not included the Loving property, which is the property south of Mill Street. And Steve started off with the same kind of conversation as you just, uh, verbalized, Michael, about the industrial overlay. And then he said, I don't see that as a problem because it's not a good industrial area. And we need housing before we're gonna need industrial. And I have, I'm, I'm actually not new at this. I've been doing it about 40 years now. And so I know what you're saying. I, I know the state land use laws. And that's one issue we need to talk to, and that would probably kill the project. However, I have been told very opposite, uh, stories about sanitary sewer. Now, I think Serge is on the line and I believe his company was told there to view the property south of Loving Street, there wasn't a sanitary sewer issue. Now, I was first told that there was, the sanitary sewer issue was a degraded pipe running from roughly the point where it decides to go across to the sewage treatment plant and going north to probably, I think it's about Oak Street or something. And the, the pipe was degrading and I believe it was a 10-inch line or something. And then most recently, um, I believe it was from Michael, it might not have been you, Michael, but we were told that there's a capacity issue, uh, in the sewer line crossing the, the Long Tom River and into the sewage treatment plant. Well, quite honestly, it doesn't matter what the property is zoned, if there's no capacity in that line and some, and it's gonna be, um, the responsibility of a developer to upgrade that line, it wouldn't be financial feasible, financially feasible to do the project. So yes, what we're looking for is, you know, any zoning issues we might have. Um, because we have been being told myself and Kevin Omera for about four or five years now, that the industrial zone change would not be an issue. Uh, this, what you just said, Michael, was the very first I've heard that it's going to be a, a big issue, uh, or an issue, I guess. It doesn't matter if it's big at this point. So we would much rather have, you know, the answers quickly so we can write this off or get it off our plate. Um, same with the sanitary sewer. I'm gonna guess there's not an issue with water. We haven't heard of one yet. And, but the, we don't see, you know, we're not the right developer for, uh, industrial properties. And as it turns out, some of, I believe even some of the Loving property south of, uh, uh, Mill Street is also zoned industrial. Uh, so that, that's kind of a major thing. And so, Michael, if we could get a, a reading on that sooner rather than later, we'd be very appreciative of it. And, and I'm gonna guess it's the Public Works Director. I think we were told when we met with you or when we talked to you, Michael, that you, the city did not have a contract civil engineer at the time. I don't know if that's been changed since then, but.
In progress. It is, um, currently in progress still, um, last I heard, and what Dan confirmed just a moment ago.
So who makes the decision, I guess, where do we have to get a decision on the sanitary sewer, whether there is a capacity issue? I mean, obviously a capacity issue is completely different than a degraded pipe issue. Um, and who will, is that the Public Works Director or will you be waiting for a civil engineer? Or do you have somebody that's a contract company maintaining your sewage treatment plant?
And that, um, that would be, um, when a civil engineer comes online to be able to, um, assess everything of whether, uh, where we're at as a capacity issue. And from what I was told when, and I had a conversation with Mark in Public Works, is that it had to do with the size of the pipes, the long time. And the city was in the works of getting a pedestrian bridge that the, that sewer infrastructure was gonna be on that, which would have resolved that potential, like, there, the issue with capacity as the pipe gets smaller, going, um, going over the Long Tom Ri- River under the, the bridge. Um, so that's the one thing I've got that has to be mitigated and whether there's gonna be a moratorium on development until there's a solution, that's another piece that still, uh, it hasn't been fully flushed out yet. And so that's kind of leaving me where it's like, I, I'm, my answers are gonna be a little bit vague and gray because, um, until we have solid answers on that, whether there's a moratorium or not, that's gonna impact every, every development that needs sewer at this point. Mine's like a couple houses that were kind of, that are already in progress. So that's kind of what we're up against right now. Um, having said that, yes, I, I wanna get you, um, closer answers too. And, um, I'm gonna work on Thursday to try to get a meeting scheduled, but I would also need to have fire department and someone from Public Works and, and if, um, if I can get Chuck, who's the Public Works Director from City of Harrisburg in on that, that's gonna help me get some guidance on some of those other logistical issues, um, once, like, if there is any other issue besides, like, um, whether the greatest sewer pipeline, I don't have that information. Um, but the capacity is something I have been briefed on. So, uh, with Chuck, getting Chuck in that conversation, I think that's gonna help me get a little more guidance on, um, what would be the process of proceeding from the public works perspective.
So, uh, right now, typically I've been involved in, well, City of Sandy right now has a certain of, uh, unit, sewer units available and kind of in that mess. But it would seem very coincidental that the sewer capacity is absolutely operating at maximum today. Uh, could you, I don't think Monroe has had, and since Red Hills, I don't think they've had very many units added to it. And so, uh, it, uh, it, my frustration is a little bit that we were told this four years ago because we wouldn't have been spending so much time on it. Uh, well, we haven't been spending a lot of time, but we wouldn't have even revisited it if it would happen. So is there 50 units available? Is there 100 units available? Is there 25 units available? Uh, you know, it seems to me like that's the answer to, or somebody needs to be pushing for, uh, because I, I, like I said, I don't see how it could just coincidentally be at capacity today. Um, and I think probably more of capacity is if the city doesn't have a workaround with, with, uh, the state on, on the industrial land supply, then that would, you know, pretty much kill this for most people. So the, I guess they're, they're kind of parallel urgent. Uh, there's a point in worrying, for us to worry about sewer capacity, that Serge probably has a, you know, an issue with that because he's got some land, you know, some lots going on the ground. But, uh, from my perspective, I wouldn't be doing any if there's not sewer capacity, obviously. Um, so I'm gonna guess that's the number one priority, but number two, which is very strongly right behind it, is if there is an industrial lands constraint that would prevent this from being mostly zone change, probably not, might not need 100%. And, you know, quite honestly, the industrial needs to be up against the highway and not back against the river. Uh, so those are the two questions that, uh, that I would certainly be looking for answers to. I could get those, I'd certainly appreciate it.
And that's like, on, I'll, I'll kind of give background on what led to the sewer capacity issue, how I understood it, how, um, Mark explained it to me. Um, in the calculations of what is like capacity with what was registered with the state, Red Hills was not in the list, so when the calculation was done, it excluded Red Hills. And so when Red Hills is added into that, that, but it does really, I don't have the exact number, whether it was 95, 97% of capacity, but it was to the point that, that it, it, if any ex, ex, large development happened beyond that, then we would be beyond capacity, is how it was explained to me. Uh, and so waiting on, I'm still waiting on further guidance of what that looks like and then solutions. Um, I will be, on July 11th, I'll be having a meeting with, uh, Patrick Weingard, um, talking about, um, some of the things with SB 1537 and whether there are any grants with respect to infrastructure that the city can apply for. And that, that's a question I don't have, that's an answer. From what I understood, when the law was passed, there was supposed to be grant money that all went to helping developers with SDC fees, but also helping with infrastructure. Infrastructure was the barrier to development and that's one thing. I'm hoping to get more clear answers because, um, I keep getting kind of in, um, not quite concrete answers that I can pass along to give any surety to people on what, what, what can and can't be done at this point. Um, with respect to the zoning part, um, from my experience as a planner, because I've been a city planner and other places in Oregon as well, um, the, I don't know how it changes with the housing production, but with SB 1537, if a zoning district does not allow residential, I don't have an avenue forward with invoking that on anything that except on lands where residential is allowed. Um, and also the other constraint is how I've had the practice planning is when you don't have 20-year inventory, whether it's residential or commercial or housing, you have to balance all those and make sure you have that or you're in violation. And then there's consequences at the state level. So that's another piece that I have to balance out as a planner because I could be personally liable for that. So that's, that's the piece that I'm, um, trying to get that balance. But as of right now, how I understand rule nine, that's like, that's what I'm up against with respect to that part that's zoned industrial. Uh, that unless there's, they make an exemption at the state level on industrial land, I, I don't have, I, the state could challenge it in court.
Okay, uh, so on the zoning issue then, what would it, so I'm gonna guess an applicant or landowner would have to bring a zone change application to even start that train down the tracks unless the city felt important, unless the city felt it was important enough to create rooftops, which could support some industrial. And so it's like a chicken and egg, if I am hearing this right, because the city would really, I'm gonna guess they don't really have a motivation to try to implement a zone change, especially a comp plan amendment and everything else uh, on, over private property if there's not, if it's not being driven by a developer. Is that correct?
Uh, in part, yes, and in part, no. Uh, the, like, even with, uh, like a zone change, whether the city initiated it or whether the landowner, uh, initiated it, when, and I'm putting it in a narrower context, that we're getting, like, anything zoned industrial that is potentially usable industrial land on paper. Uh, it, whether the city initiated that or whether the, um, landowner initiated that with a rezone application, the challenge is gonna be, as you're going through the criteria and we, like, the development code for City of Monroe, um, is the model, model zoning code that the LCD had put forward and, and that's what was adopted. To do something that's in violation of one of the rules, um, is something that the state has come down on other municipalities when it comes to that, and specifically industrial and commercial land. Um, and so that's where, like, if either one of us did it, the state would have the right to challenge it and say that it's not. And if, uh, let's say me as a planner still recommended approval despite this not being the 20-year inventory, that's where the state could intervene and, and nullify it. So that's, that's kind of what we're up against right now. And that's why I'm like trying to balance the scales to see what's gonna be the right and appropriate action because, yes, uh, and it, it's like, we do want landowners to be able to develop their land, but we also, since we have the comprehensive plan and map, we've gotta also adhere to that, um, because that's the enforcement mechanism at the state level that a municipality is complying with all provisions of Oregon land use law.
Yeah, I just, I just pulled up the zoning map and actually all of the Loving property and approximately half of, uh, Omira's property is all, all zoned, uh, industrial. So anyway, I appreciate it. I'll wait, I'll wait to hear from you. I won't take any more of the council's time. Thank you very much for hearing me.
And thank you for providing the questions and, yeah, and I, um, yeah, and you have my email, don't you?
If I don't, Margot does, yeah.
Okay, yeah, just, um, send, yeah, just send another email and then I'm gonna try to coordinate on Thursday and try to get another meeting so we can, we can have a, a much bigger discussion, um, in person and, and over teams or whatever method we need to do for, for a meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have, uh, questions or concerns?
Um, can I talk about my project too? Uh, Serge, Pacific National Development. Uh, I have an application in for subdivision and application for a variance for lot size, uh, in with the city. Um, I would, uh, I wanna move forward on approvals regardless of the moratorium conversation, just because of how long things take. Um, I do, and, and also wanna talk about wetlands. I, I, you know, it took me three years, $200,000 to, to, uh, to get a delineation, uh, to buy credits, um, pay for all the wetland stuff, and I do have expiration dates on those. So I, I really would like to, at a very minimum, to move forward on approvals on my project and at least get maybe an erosion control, 1200C and a grading permit. Um, get the ro, uh, the roads rocked. Um, and if, if, if there is any capacity for any hookups, I, I, I would definitely like to have the conversation of us getting those hookups. Um, so it's, it's, it's 26 lots. And if, if, if you guys have capacity for, for 15 of them, 10 of them, I, I, I would like to at least sit down and, and have conversations about getting those hookups. Um, but that said, I, I do have an expiration on my fill permit uh, with DSL in the core. Um, so I would like to move forward at least on getting a grading permit, a 1200C and an erosion control this year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, since that, that part is kind of outside of the planning scope of of subdividing and since the property is already owned by him, there wouldn't be anything that would preclude him from doing the grading and meeting the requirements of the, um, 1200C and, and the wetland mitigation, uh, permit for grading.
Not that I'm worried.
Yeah, not that I'm, that he was, should, should still be able to submit those permits to the county because that would be a county permit for the grading. That's not, that part's not done by the city. So I think you would be okay with to go ahead and proceed with those because there wouldn't be any planning and zoning review for grading and, 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 and site preparation.
I was under the impression too, that we already, uh, discussed the variance on the lot size. Didn't, didn't we talk about the, that a while ago about, uh, just, just, uh, adjusting the delineation of that area?
And so I do have a question.
That was part of our minutes on last year, I think.
Um, was there any change? Because I have, like, what's on the website for the development code is the 2013 development code. Um, has there been any changes to the minimum lot standards for GRA since then? Because right now it says 8,000 feet.
There, there, there has been a change.
Can I, can I step in and give you guys some history on that? So, so when I originally bought this property, those lots were twenty five by one oh five. So they, they didn't meet your guys' standards. What we wanted to do was with Jim Menard, when he was the planner, city planner, was we wanted to, we wanted to take two lots and just do a, through a record of survey, we were going to eliminate, kind of eliminate, take two lots and we're going to combine them into one. He got fired, then you guys hired Rick. Rick came up with a, he would not accept that process at all. He, he, he said, you, you, you're going to have to go through either a subdivision application or you're going to have to do a partition. The issue we ran into was Menard basically said, I, I don't acknowledge there's any wetlands here, move forward. When Rick came on, he's like, no, wetland inventory maps show wetlands. I want a delineation. We got a delineation. Well, it was a lot worse than what we thought it was going to be. So we came up with doing a partition. We partitioned each parcels into thirty. So I did create fifty five hundred square foot lots in there. I didn't meet your guys' standard, but my understanding is we went to council and the council changed, changed the zoning in that area. So I've created fifty five hundred square foot lots. Now, my planner right now, you know, ju- just to, you know, cross her Ts and dot, dot the Is. She submitted the variance just because she couldn't find it anywhere in there, but we fit the requirements with the variance. And that's why we submitted the application for the variance. Now, if you guys don't think we have to have the, the variance, let's just pull that application. But we just, you know, we just didn't want to go down the line and then you guys coming back to us and saying, well, you guys don't meet the standard, you know, we're going to have to do this or this or that. So the planner figured that we'll go ahead and, and, and fill out an application for a variance and, and we're within that that percentage of where we can create these lots. It's six thousand square foot. It's, it's not eight thousand.
And the reason I asked like what that number is, so if it's six thousand, if let's say GR, GR, the zoning district, oh.
It doesn't, yeah, I, I agree about the no variance. I believe that we already shifted that whole, that whole zone into a new zone.
Oh, it's in GRB.
It's in GRB.
Okay, that, that changes.
We changed that because there's so many variation of lot sizes there. When you're dealing with eighth and seventh, you've got, you know, really small lot sizes. And so I think we shifted that. That was recent though. That was.
Fifty five hundred.
Twenty four.
Last year.
It was the, it was last year, twenty twenty four. We, Steve brought this up and we agreed that, so it significantly reduced
And city council did go for it. Yeah, I think it did go to city council.
It did go to city council later.
And the reason I asked that is if, let's say, let's say the minimum lot size is six thousand. In under the passage of SB fifteen seventy three, it's like the city shall allow adjustments. It'd be like a type one, it would just be ancillary and a staff report on the subdivision. If, because all the lots are exceeding fifty four hundred square feet, so it would be within that ten percent adjustment, which is allowed under SB fifteen thirty seven. So under that scope, I mean, you could still have the variance application, but it'd be like a type one variance under SB fifteen thirty seven. So that was the reason I asked it in that, that plane. And then it would just be whatever a type one variance would be for application fee. And then, and then for the rest of it, I mean, it was submitted as multiple partitions, but I think we can treat it as one as a subdivision and then do a combined proceeding procedurally. And then that'll just be a much cleaner way to, to go about that going forward and then going through.
My hope is, is there any way to go back and see what avenue we used to create those fifty five hundred square foot lots? Because, because I, I did give them in there. So.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they're down to fifty five hundred and approved, then, then the SB fifteen thirty seven point is moot and it would just be proceed as a sub.
My understanding of what, what was Rick went in there and, and in that area where we had smaller lots, he, he changed up to fifty five hundred. I mean, it, it, it would be interesting to just go back and check what, what, what we did. I, I just did a partition, that's it. So, you know, maybe looking back at two thousand and nineteen when I did them, you could check what, how did I accomplish that?
Yeah.
Sizes, those lot sizes were what, twenty five by one ten?
Yeah, they're tw- they're twenty five by one oh five or one ten. You're right.
Yeah. And so the, the thing was, we added them together to make that fifty five hundred. I remember that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's what we did. So they're, they're fifty by one ten, fifty foot wide, hundred, hundred and ten feet deep. So that's, that's fifty five hundred square feet. And, and, and I, I got it done somehow. So I don't think we did a variance. I think, I think Rick, do you guys remember Rick?
Yeah.
Any of the planning commission guys? So Rick, Rick went back, I think he went back to the planning commission and the council and said, look, these, these twenty five by one ten lots, we, we just got to kind of maybe do a zone change there and, and allow for fifty five hundred square foot lots to happen. So that, I think that's what he did. And I, I mean, I got them done. So we, we did some type of application. I, I know it was a partition, but I don't recall any other variants or non-conforming use applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall one either. I remember that discussion of combining them and making them the fifty five, like, like Tim said, that was the discussion we had.
I'm just trying to see like from like, what's the published zoning code online, having whatever the update, a lot size would be having that information so we can get it online, because right now with, in the absence of that, all I have to go on would be whatever is published as my, is what I use to, to do any review. But it's, let's say, assuming the fifty five hundred is fine with the rezone and all that, once I get, get that history in there and, and then confirm so I can have that document in the file. The only lot that's under fifty five hundred square feet is for the stormwater treatment and that's moot, that, that, that we could just treat as, what do you call, there's a word, it would just be an easement for that stormwater infrastructure. So it wouldn't be a residential lot and therefore that one would not need a variance. So yeah, so I'll, I'll follow up and get the rest of the history and get that locked in there. And then, and then with what's there, I also need to get it online, because that's going to be important for any development going forward, making sure that we have the, the most current minimum lot standards for the zoning districts. So thank you for bringing that up.
So going back to my grading plan conversation, my engineer still has to draw plans for cuts and fills. I, I need to get a geotech involved. So there is some plan review that needs to happen. I, in my, in, in my opinion. So I, 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 I mean, who does that go to for plan review? In, in, or, or, or what you're saying is just draw it up and permit it? I mean, does it go to the county? What, how, how does it work?
Yeah. So anything that's doing the cuts and whatnot, I would, you can still submit it to me. And then I would have public works and our contract engineer review everything and making sure it's conformance to all of the engineering guidelines that go beyond planning. And then, and then I had one other question, since I have you on here. The stormwater report, that was from the, I believe it was like twenty twenty three, that's what the initial before it's going to subdivision. Do you see that there's any changes or that the numbers are, should still be the same on everything?
The numbers should be the same. We just got our four oh one through what's called DQ.
DQ, okay.
Yeah, for, for, for the clean water. So we're, we're, we're actually going to be, the water's actually going to be cleaned before it gets discharged.
And you said that was already approved, you already got that approved.
Yeah, yeah. So I, so, so I have, I have approval through the core. I have approval. I have approval through DSL. I've purchased my wetland, my credits for the, for, for the wetlands. It was roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And, and then I have the four oh one through DQ.
And I see that like copies of applications of that with the, with the submittal. I didn't, and I started looking through it before I came to the meeting, but I didn't see the approvals. Do you have copies of the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get the copies.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll shore that part up. And then, yeah, I, I don't, right now I don't see any, it's like, I think there's going to be enough to call it complete. But yeah, like with some of those others for the site design review portion of the subdivision for the cutouts, I would go and try to get those to me in the next week or two, if you can. And then that way I could just, whoops, go ahead and proceed with everything and start getting that staff report and then note, and then we could notice it, get the get that on the schedule for the planning permission.
So is, is there any way to ask for an exemption on your guys' moratorium on my project?
We, we don't have a formal moratorium. We were, there was a discussion of it at our last planning, planning meeting, but the, are, are these minutes public, by the way, from last meeting? It's like, I mean, it was a public meeting.
Yeah, it should be.
It was a public meeting.
So they should be. I mean, we could supply the meeting minutes that have a lot more detail about.
Well, there's still a conversation that needs to be had between the city attorney, the city council and the city engineer and public works. So that conversation, I'm hoping to have that. I understand, trying to get everybody together at the same time to talk about this. I'm hoping in a couple of weeks we'll be able to do that.
And I'm hoping to get some answers July eleventh during my meeting with Patrick on infrastructure SB thirty, fifteen thirty seven grants, because I think that's going to be a very important piece of the puzzle.
Between the new, between getting an engineer and the new staff coming for the administrator, it seems like a resolution in a way, a path is going to be a lot clearer than it currently is.
Hopefully very soon, yes.
Does that help explain a little bit about where we're at?
Oh, just keep in mind, I have twenty six lots there, twenty six mental houses. And I, I would like to see if we can, I can have an exemption on those. Me and Michael talked about a developer flipping the tab on upsizing the pump and possibly, you know, upsizing the pipe to, to the lagoons. Unfortunately, this project would be too small. But the other project, fifty acres for the UGB one time, UGB expansion. Now, that's a different conversation. You know, that, not, not only is there grants out there, which I think you guys should be looking into, you know, I, I, that's a big enough project where stuff like that can be absorbed with the developer. But the twenty six lots, it's, it's too small of a project. It, it would not be financially feasible.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, it's, it's our understanding that one of the issues with the capacity on the wastewater is that it's mixing with our stormwater. And so that depends on what time of year, certain times of year, we're double capacity and certain times of year, we're barely at capacity. So the engineer record and the public works, until we get them to meet and analyze and do the, and look at the feasibility studies, we are, we're, we really are waiting.
Yeah.
We're not making any decisions until we get that information.
Exactly.
So and, and, and let them know that there's an application for twenty six, for twenty six lots. And if there's anything that can be done to, to, you know, possibly get those twenty six lots done. But I kind of understand you guys' situation back in the day. That's what they did. They took the rough drains and they put them into the sewer and all of it went to the sewer treatment plant. City of Salem right now is, is, is fixing that. They're putting in brand new storm lines and brand new sewer lines to separate the two. So I, I get it. I get the situation.
Yeah, but we appreciate you being here and asking the questions and, and hopefully Michael can get some answers for you here as soon as possible.
Okay, so Michael, once application is deemed complete, what's next up?
Uh, next up for me would be getting it on the schedule for planning commission. Since I'm only here one day a week, I've got to make sure I have enough time to compile the staff report. I mean, for a subdivision, I have to also make, get whatever comments from fire, public works, city engineer incorporated into that, because it's like, let's say there's something that needs to be altered on it from a public works perspective, like stormwater detention or whatever the case may be, I got to make sure that those conditions of approval get in there. And that, that, all of that is ready for the planning commission when I present it.
Is there, sorry to interrupt, but is there a public hearing also on that, on that subdivision design?
There would be a public hearing.
I know that the reason I bring it up is that there were a number of neighbors who came to a couple of meetings previous and with a, sharing a lot of thoughts about this particular issue.
Yeah. And kind of like, I had a conversation with Mark and trying to see like with what was proposed for kind of stormwater detention and trying to link that to the other pieces, so that way there's a seamless of especially Trevin's property where water's going over the top is a, is a legitimate concern.
There were some other before you.
Yeah, some other, yeah. So trying to just make sure that all that, we, if we do all those things right and have everything in the right position, then that's going to minimize any opposition to it and then solve an ongoing problem on that side of town.
I think people really support it if they see the plan.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else online have a comment or question?
Oh, I see a hand up.
Yeah, there's somebody.
I have a question and I apologize. I'm having internet issues. I don't know why. I'm like dial up over here for some reason. So my, I had to get on with my wifi and it has the wrong name creation. So I'm Katie Kydell. I work with Metro Planning down in Springfield. And I just have a really simple question, but for some reason we just kind of got put into this meeting. I don't know if we're in the right place. Harry is also, he's on the, I think it's screen.
We can see him, yeah.
Okay.
Hello.
So we just are, we primarily, we work in Lane County, so City of Springfield, Lane County, City of Springfield, City of Eugene, whatever, Benita, Florence, but we don't typically work in other counties. So I, we're doing a partition in the City of Monroe Depot Street by five five depot. And which is industrial land, industrial zones. And we just couldn't find, we just couldn't find application forms and fees online. That's, that's really all we need. Yeah.
And I will find that out because that's the same question I have as well. And we're getting, as I'm coming across processes, I'm getting those applications added to the plant, building and planning part of the city website. So and then what, and have you emailed in before or anything?
Yeah, Harry and I, Harry's emailed and I think we've both called and left messages. I think Harry spoke with someone.
Okay, because I've been out a few weeks because I got really, really sick. So I, I've been out and playing catch up. So I don't know if I've gotten to your email or whatnot, if it's been in the past.
Oh, we got the Zoom link. But yeah. So is there no, there's currently right now, we have no partition, tentative partition application form?
Um, I, I don't think there's one on the website. I do have access to it. So.
There is a partition app. Yeah, I just, we got to find it. But yeah.
And then it's like, yeah, and I can't remember off the top of my head the fee for, because I'm going to, if the number I'm going to throw would be the Philomena, then I don't think it's the same, same amount, since I'm also a planner for City of Philomena.
Right. Okay. So I called also not Jackson County, sorry, what county you guys?
We're Benton County.
So yeah, I did happen to speak with someone in Benton County. Will any of the, so I guess the subsequent question is, will any of the processes like you were mentioning, public works, and you guys have a contract engineer to do some of the public works and engineering and stuff for partitions, subdivisions, whatever, will any of it need to be done through the county? I don't know. Any news here? If like the transportation portion, county, because it's a county road.
Good question.
Yeah, with the partition, it, yeah, it shouldn't impact that. Only when you get to the building permit phase, the building permit part and the structural would, would be with the county. It's small enough. I don't think there's not, there's not going to be an environmental permit that's going to go along with that, with any development from what I can recall. So it would, it should be just a partition. And then what was that address again? You said on depot? I didn't hear all of it. Oh, okay. Yep. And I believe I have to I have that folder on my desk, so I need to look through it. I some things have been done on it. I just need to get to what conditions are there. That's that's the piece that I need to to get get that to you.
I have some and I guess code. Jed, my boss, he did say he found the code. I is that online? Is the code online? I'm pretty accessible.
Yeah, the development code is is online in the language for partition, even with the changes like in bulk standard shouldn't be any different. Hasn't been any changes to that partition process. I know the state, uh, it's like with some. Legal decisions that have happened in the past few years, uh, in time, we may have to go to what how they're dealing with the. Uh, a simpler partition, one to two lots is being treated a little bit differently. So it's like it's it's like some of those are they're recommending those to be type one versus type two. Right, but as long as Monroe's development could cause type two legally, we have to go with that process. So it's kind of this weird. Nebulous. So right now, until eventually it will it'll have to be type one, but right now it'll still be a type two, which just means fourteen day notice before decision.
Right, yeah, I mean, everything, every partition I've ever done has been a type two, so I'm. I mean, type one would be amazing.
There was, I think it was a Lake Oswego decision. It's like with Luba that changed like that, like their subdivision and their partition got bumped down and saying. Really subdivision should be type two and.
Yeah.
Type one, so it changes the scope a little bit, but then go with my study of Oregon land use law, that also is like a very changing direction. Because they want it to be citizen neighbor focused on any impacts. And this just limits the the decision making like citizen input to. Okay, there might be an issue with a easement or some sort of like agreement that might not be seen from a planning perspective, so.
Right.
It's it's shifty like sand these days with coming down from the state.
The middle housing, you know, ADUs and all this, yeah, every. Oh, I like it. It needs to be, you know, needs to be shook up a little bit, I think.
Yeah.
Good. Um, uh, okay, so. Do you have the, how should I get contact information from you guys? Should I give you my contact information? Do you have our?
Yeah, and I don't know if I've gotten it. It's like I'm about um, a week and a half out on email. So if I got the email in the past week and a half, I'm haven't gotten to it. But was your name on on any of the applications for five 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 depot or? No, no, okay. So like if you call into the city, you'll probably talk to Dawn. Or have you have you spoken with Dawn Flora?
Oh, then I've left a voicemail. All I got was a voicemail. It was on a Tuesday and it was last Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, a call back in um, Dawn's usually unless she's on the other line, we'll answer the phone. And then and then you can um, pass the contact information and then I'll get on to me and then next Tuesday I can then follow up with you on that.
And um, eh, first of all, oh, okay, Dawn Flora, I see. Okay, and then are you Dan?
No, that's me.
Yeah, I'm Michael Bibble. I'm the new planner.
Just the only face I can see, so. Apologize for that. Okay, uh, wait, so who Dan's there somewhere and then who is?
Yeah, Dan's the the mayor and was probably in that email with Dawn. I'm Michael Bidwell. I'm the.
Michael.
And here one day a week, so.
Yes.
On Tuesdays.
Yes. Um, how do you spell your last name, Michael?
Um, B as in birthday, I D as in dog, W E L L.
Okay, bidwell. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, gosh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You're fine.
Okay. Okay, so I will do that. We we will reach out again um, this week. Be email and just try to work on getting some applications and just gets a little more information to get the project rolling. I know, I know they're ready to get. Get things moving, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks for waiting. I think you might have more questions, so I appreciate you letting me interrupt there.
Not a problem.
Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to talk about, uh, do you want to talk about it or do you want me?
We're we're, we actually had a a special session with the city council and the planning commission last week. And we were going to go ahead and start talking about tap fees. And then we were also going to talk about land land use fees. And so I had taken the opportunity to go to and I looked at seven different cities on their websites. I didn't have time to call folks. Uh, to get a comparison on some of these land use fees. And then I I think I got about three cities when it came to comparison on the tap fees. So if you go into the packet here. And Dawn had a little bit of trouble getting everything on one piece of paper, so you may have to flip to get, you know. I think Vinita was the one that fell off.
It fell off.
Yeah, but we also have a section of the city of Harrisburg standard fee schedule. Um, the land use fees actually start on page, let's say twenty one, yeah, twenty one. And then your comparisons are beyond that. And if you need to tear the packet apart, do it. It might be easier to instead of flipping through pages. But I did slip Monroe in there. It's the first column and you'll see. If we're talking about land use fees, which I think we want to talk about, talk about tap fees first, but I'll let that I'll leave that to you, Chair.
All right, now let me see, let me see where I can see where the tap fees are if we flip through here.
Tap fees, I put them, they're probably in the back.
Towards the back.
Yeah, I think so. Like I said, I was only able to get, I think, three settings. Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. That really does help.
Of course. Hey, guys, can can I just one more thing and then I'm 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 gonna go. While we're having the conversation about not tap fees, but application fees. When when do I pay my application fee for the subdivision?
Oh, yeah, you want to pay that uh, pay that as soon as possible. Like if you can pay it within the next week. That'll be the other piece of being complete because I hadn't that was the piece I hadn't gone through. See if you had paid the fee. I found um, the receipt for the pre-application fee. But I I hadn't had a chance to follow up with Dawn to see if you had paid uh, for the subdivision.
Okay, what about the variant? Do I pay for the variants too?
No, how we'll do it as um, is a bulk proceeding, so it'll just be combined together. So just be paying um. Since right now you it was submitted as four partitions. How I'm looking at it from procedurally, it would just be a one subdivision fee for the twenty six units. So it would just be submitting the um, application fee for.
Can you figure out the fees given to me tomorrow and I can make I can make arrangements. Uh, I can have Renee at the office make arrangements, get the money to you guys. Possibly tomorrow, Thursday.
All right, I'm gonna make a note to myself. Actually, I don't work tomorrow. It also it'll be Thursday for me. Because Philomena, I no longer work Wednesdays because of budget cuts.
Okay, all right, so let let me what the fees are and I'll have the office take care of it. Hopefully, I'm grandfathered in with the old price.
I've got a quick question on that too. If we already rezone that area from GRB to GRA. Is a variant still required or?
A variance wouldn't be required at that point. And and then let's say it, if let's say that the zoning standard was six thousand feet. I mean, we can still keep the variance application, but it's going to be treated a lot differently because um, SB fifteen thirty seven says the city shall make adjustments. And if it's six thousand square feet, let's it let's say it's that versus fifty five hundred. Um, it'll still be within a ten percent variation, which. SB fifteen thirty seven.
We we know we've already. Rezone that. If if that worked that we did not get into city documents, then we have to go by the old.
Yeah, if we can't, if I can't, if I know what ordinance or whatnot changed it, then I can go off of that. And then we just may, I just may, we'll probably have to get Dawn. To make it as a supplemental link on there. So that'll would be known that this is the updated for.
It should be minutes where we.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we changed G R A to G R B. So and we and we said to city council.
I think I thought I thought I actually went to the city council meeting and saw it on that agenda. I thought they.
If it's on the city council, that I have access to those minutes, the minutes in the agendas, so.
It was coupled with Turdy and Commercial Street in the commercial.
Yeah.
Area. So those two both.
And that was in late twenty twenty four, right?
Yeah, somewhere, yeah, in the last six months of twenty twenty four.
And yeah.
It's probably, I don't know if it ever got submitted, you know, recorded, but it's. I don't, that might make the variance.
Yeah, and and that's kind of what I'm thinking like if it if it was made to fifty five hundred, then that's the variances just would just be ignored at that.
If you can find that action that was taken by planning commission and city council, then you can.
Yeah.
You can insert that into it. Whatever you need to do to make it official, then all the variants.
Yeah, okay. And so and like just thought I'm like, yeah, city council, everything is online, so I could actually search that myself and not even get Dawn. So it's like. That gets me a little homework. Tuesday morning, I need to do that ASAP.
Do we have? If I find anything, I'll I'll let you know.
Because I'm assuming it's like something would be somewhere between like July and November or.
That's the way I recall.
Yeah. Okay, at least it's city council. So it's like that's all online, so I can I can I can query that myself and and get the answers. And then if we need to upload anything to the website, I'll just.
And this word, we're trying to understand if we know we've taken actions at different times, it should be in our minutes.
Yeah.
And I used to keep all my minutes, but I don't anymore. But if we take action and the city council takes action, but it doesn't get recorded either on city documentations or in a county. Then then it's not legitimately recognized as. It's it's still not built into the codes.
Which then means DLCD should also have notes. That's another area I can I could search because I now have all the accesses I need to. The Monroe's history with um, submittals to DLCD. So that's another. Point that I can look at because if it's past city council, then they're going to have that information.
If if it was submitted.
If it was submitted. And let's say it wasn't, there's still an avenue to be able to do that with with DLCD. So it's just a matter if one if it is recorded and they see it, then then it's fine. If not, then I'll have to do a submittal to DLCD amended.
So if we're ready to go back to tap fees, if I if I could mention one more.
Thank you, council members. I'm gonna be checking out.
All right, thanks, Eric. So if you look at Harrisburg, Harrisburg is really broken out when it comes to the tap fees. So you'll see Harrisburg, which is one, two, three, four over. Uh, service, it's got service installation. They have a they have a fee for that. Then they break it down by the meter. The size of the meter. So you'll see like three quarters of an inch, an inch. And then they have they have other um, fees that are coincide with that as well, that most other cities I found don't. Just to give you, Harrisburg seemed to have a lot of, a lot of interesting information, especially when it came to this particular fee. And then Brownsville had something and Junction City, and then I think Vinita as well. Again, Vinita kind of fell off onto the next page, so.
When I have a document for Philomena, um, because they have it in their SDC table.
Okay.
So I just need to refer to that and then I can get you that.
Yeah, I just I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's not, it's like I had to ask her an email. It's not easily found online.
Yeah, as I'd like.
You need a big packet? Where do you compare other cities to Monroe? What do we compare?
Well, I mean, we don't have one, so.
Kind of how it's structured. Take the same amount of work to install the meters, whatever they're using Harrisburg to what we're doing.
I think that would be fairly comparable. Yeah, yeah.
We're estimating. Work and what things should cost. It's kind of, we decide you pull it works to tell us what how long to take.
Right.
Give us some sense of what we're.
Well, I think with Harrisburg, I I'm wondering if this whole service installation piece, if that's the if that's public works time there. I I'm not a hundred percent for sure on that.
So I thought he said in our meeting was that they don't trust a contractor to to punch into the system.
Right, so they do.
That they're that they actually do it themselves. And that's their minimum.
Yeah.
Fee. And but that's why you're not seeing anything at other cities because they basically just inspect and that's what Mark says that. He gives them the the contractor, the green light. They basically just review that they punched into the system.
Right.
And so I think I think Harrisburg does it differently. Why they have, because they have the staff to do it.
Right.
That might be why their fee is so much uh, higher. Because they basically are saying, hey, we don't trust anybody else. But I also see, if you look at Vinita, they don't have it if you flip it. But then they do have a drop fee of a thousand.
Which either way, they're not very discriminating.
Similar to Junction City.
Right.
But they the Junction City doesn't have an installation fee. And nobody else does other than Harrisburg. But as I recall, listening to Chuck and Mark talk. That was why they that was there is because they physically do that piece of work.
Well, I mean, we could we could do a basic tap fee and then and then have like a per hour for public works time kind of.
Yeah, because I think there was a question mark about we have to pay for the people to do.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have somebody else do it, yeah.
So even if we're not doing the actual work.
We still need to.
Have to pay for these.
Yeah, we still need to charge something to cover our costs. Yeah.
Yeah, so if you let's let's just go with like the three quarter meter drop. Brownsville's three hundred, Harrisburg's four forty, Junction City's a thousand fifty, and Vinita's a thousand.
So that's a pretty big variance there.
Yeah.
I mean, we're we're not in here to, you know, gouge people, but we do want to make sure that our people are.
Well, if you, yeah, if you look at Junction City, um, cost of meter, materials and labor plus a five percent service fee. So that's what they said. They didn't even give a number. And that was on the one and one half inch installation of a meter. So that's an option too. Does anybody have an idea what we should?
A non-residential installation.
I would assume so, yes. Commercial. Does anybody have a have a suggestion?
Well, the fact that we started with uh, thinking SDC charges was uh, the way we were benefiting so well with this whole system. And now we found it to be a slap in the face and we get nothing. Uh, we need to start with something. And I understand it looks pretty high here, but uh, city's been taking the shorts for so long now that uh. You know, besides almost being broke, we need to start recouping and especially if you're gonna have a bunch more housing come in here. Red Hills didn't, they didn't get any of this service charge. Uh, Serge within the first eight didn't get any of these. Um, service charges.
Nope.
So.
Well, moving, I agree with you, but moving forward, we can't make up for mistakes on our new customer. For the past or new customer, but what is, does anybody have a suggestion of what they think is fair?
Yep.
Do we have an idea? I mean, I am looking. What we want to make sure is that we're not losing money.
Correct.
So would it not make sense then to adopt a philosophy of the cost of materials?
Materials, labor and. Yeah.
Right, but so that that would preclude us from having to figure out what it's going to be and then add a certain percentage, whether it's going to be five percent or whatever.
Like Junction City.
Right. I mean, to me, that makes the most sense because I have no idea.
Yeah.
Labor costs or what the materials cost, but if we put it in, it's labor cost plus a percentage of whatever.
And public works can tell you all that when you're when you're wanting to do that.
But let's say branch engineering, if they're going to be the engineer.
Right.
They should have a set fee that they should, you could figure out and apply that. That way it's not open ended.
Right.
I I don't have a problem with your philosophy, but it would just be quick reference and and easy for people to know if it was.
We could, you could put a minimum in there. You could say five hundred dollars or whatever you want to, you know, something. Or minimum.
And you could always have that information available to say, you know, typically this runs somehow.
Uh, if you look at these fees too, they've got a number. They've got a number for three quarters, they got another number one inch. And and I have an inch and a half meter at my house, okay? And so I've done some research to try and find a backflow prevention, all that kind of stuff. And that's just very uncommon, so that's no wonder that they say cost of the meter plus materials.
Right.
Because they're going.
We don't know.
We have no clue what that meter is going to cost.
Right.
And if we're going to be able to find it. So that's why they've got no set number there. So rather than us coming up with a. A thing that we got to calculate plus, you know, five percent or something. We to to Dave's point, if you're online and you're figuring out what it's going to cost to do this. Project, we should have a set number. So it's no surprise and and not, you know.
Right.
And something like, well, what is that five percent? What does that cost?
The the inch and a half is, that's an exception. I mean, that's going to be a commercial operation. The the inch and a half is, that's an exception. I mean, that's gonna be a commercial operation of some magnitude, right? So I mean, really, I think I don't have a problem with doing exactly like them, you know, cost plus materials. Um but for a three quarter inch, you know, typical dwelling, I think that should be, I feel it should be just a flat rate. And whatever, however we come to that. Because that's a pretty, I mean, very common materials and stuff like that, and we should be able to easily figure out how much it's gonna cost the city to have branch engineering or. And engineering spec.
Right. I mean, before we put in a number on there, I'd wanna have some information about what actually it is.
Yep.
So are we trying to set fees or are we trying to come up with a process to establish?
Well, originally, I think we were gonna try and set these, but I think we're finding it still a bit more. Involved than just.
Yeah, it seems like with tap fees, it's a little more.
The service installation, what does that entail?
I don't know.
Is it the contractor digging down to the pipe?
This is Harrisburg, so they're doing it.
Well, Harrisburg does.
Well, this is Harrisburg.
Right.
Right, so.
I'm I'm looking at Monroe, and I know some of those water pipes and sewer pipes are twelve to. Thirteen feet deep on Commercial Street.
Yeah, so we don't want to be involved in that.
I wouldn't think so. Never have been before, but.
No, we don't, we don't want our city staff. Do that.
So so what is that? What is the uh?
Well, what is the definition of service installation?
Service installation.
Is that to the property? I mean, to me, that's a meter drop, right? Um or is it just tap in into the main line?
I think it's uh.
Well, what are the definitions? So I think we need public works to tell us what these things are and give us an estimate of the time. We, I can't, I feel like I'm trying to set fees or something, I have no idea. And and we also. Are not gonna be, I know that there was a service. What is, what are tap fee? And there was inspection fee and there were, and that, so are we allowed? I think we want to continue to allow developers to make the connection, but there has to be an inspection. So I know we had two different fees for that process. But I think we need, I think we need public works to come in and explain what these are and what they estimate the time to be and. What they think they're capable of.
And the meters, they uh, the city. Supplies of, the contractor doesn't go out and buy something.
Yeah, the city supplies.
We supply all the meters.
So that needs to be spelled out.
Yeah, getting the cost of the meter shouldn't be a big deal. They should be able to tell us the time. I don't, you know, the materials, timing materials might be the variables there, but. Yeah, get a range.
Why there is such a variety of. Fees. From, just say dropping typical three quarter inch. Brownsville three hundred versus Junction City a thousand. So what, what, what accounts for three times the amount?
Well, I I think some of them, they're manual read, some of them are electronic.
Okay.
And some of them are, I mean, I I I think Junction City, they don't even have to drive around. They have a. It's wifi and it's.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we have here, so.
Much more expensive than. I I'd still see our guys run down popping, popping lids, look, read manually reading stuff. That would probably be your. Your three hundred dollar Brownsville meter versus, I'm sure that wifi in Junction City is probably a pretty expensive. Meter.
From what I remember with uh Philomath, and I'll, I'll get those um fees here. It's like, I I actually have it. And it because it's broken down in Philomath's S D C fees um for meter installation and all that. It's like. I feel like from what I remember, it's it's more comparable to Junction City um than it is to Brownsville. Yeah.
Meter drop and we just need some estimates from public works and then we'll be able to have that information to provide a good suggestion. And then there's other elements on here regarding the delinquent accounts and the testing. It seems like we can probably adopt. The Harrisburg model for the, for the testing and the, where it just says actual cost makes sense.
Is there any testing done now?
On the meters? Yeah, occasionally there are.
Water testing.
Water testing?
Yeah, so you drop a meter in and. The water goes through the pipes in the house.
I imagine there is some sort of testing. I know residents occasionally do ask for a test. Or they will bring a sample in and they'll want us to test it. So that does happen every once in a while.
I didn't know that.
I don't think that's on here. I I water quality test isn't on.
Yeah.
Says testing water meter.
Yeah.
Delinquent accounts, I think it's just a matter of.
Do we, do we have a, we have a late fee, don't we, on the liquid accounts already?
Yeah, for the water, yeah, for the.
Utility, yeah. So we just don't have it listed on here.
Yeah.
So we do have one of them.
We do. I I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Do we have, we have a turn on fee too that?
Mm-hmm, we do.
We, we already have those two.
We have a shut off fee, we've got a, you know, turn it back on fee. Yes, we have all those.
We should come up with a water test fee to.
The water meter testing one. Oh, you come up with them.
Yeah, if they dispute the. Is that where if you got a customer disputing the reading and then?
Those do happen occasionally. We don't normally charge for that cuz they'll, Mark will, Mark will, or Chuck will go back out and just run it again. I mean, there could be. Okay.
But we should just do that, the Harrisburg.
Yeah, if they, if they dispute the.
Testing the meter.
Yeah, testing. We probably should not.
The Harrisburg model, I should agree, where it says actual costs for those. Meter for the last three.
I think we need to be careful too, because if it, if if a customer truly has a concern. And it's, it's not a monthly concern that, hey.
Could be a one time thing, yeah.
Then maybe we should waive it as a one time thing, but if we're.
Staff cost.
Yeah. It's more of a. It should be more of an odd on our part if there is a dispute. I mean, if there's, if they're disputing it frequently, then that might be.
That's another matter, if it's a one time thing.
One time.
Yeah.
Hey, this is, I've had a real anomaly. We were gone on vacation and. How did this happen?
Yeah, they could have a leak, so, yeah.
Yeah, they could have a leak or something, so.
Yeah.
So what do we just find out about tap fees?
So is, is it possible? Maybe a subgroup of us sit with public works and kind of go over, figure out what they do and. Generate fees based, well, for find out what we have, what fees we have and what fees we don't. And then bring those forward with fine commission to review.
Uh, I can just ask Mark to pull that together. He's on vacation, so we'll see him in about a week.
Yeah, I'm ready to decide on uh public dance fees right now.
Me too.
Ah, yes, we talked about this last time. You won't be catching me dancing publicly. So I will, I will go ahead and follow up with Mark with public, with public works. So you get it, get the uh cost on meters for each one of the diameter of the pipe there.
Trying to avoid scheduling another meeting.
Yes, well, there is that. Well, we need Mark and he's not here, so.
That's the, to just to simplify it, that this commission just needs to receive a recommendation and then we'll review it. So we're not, that's, that's basically what we need to do.
Yeah.
Okay. And we could take that approach.
I will get the information that you, that you need.
So if we went clear back to the beginning, we could just quickly flip through the beginning of the packet. Land use fees and just move forward from there since we really.
Monroe, you'll know Monroe doesn't have too many, so.
Wow.
Right. So if you go down here, uh the ones that are kind of a darker color gray, tho- that was my attempt at highlighting, but this was.
Printed in black and white, not color. Those are the ones that I am recommending that the city consider having fees for. So like.
So give me a situation on annexation application.
Well, we're gonna have one. Aren't we? U G B.
Aren't we initiating that?
I guess we're, we're gonna find out.
Initiate it. Why are we charging a fee?
We don't charge if somebody asked us to.
Yeah, if, if it would be one thing if somebody keep uh. You know, land or keep us, hey, I want.
Let's still paperwork involved.
There always is.
And I'll know more about how that process is gonna work once I have my meeting with Patrick on July eleven.
And I think just about every city that I looked at had. An annexation app, yeah.
Holy cow.
Yeah, Coburg, wow.
Wow.
Okay. Well, and sometimes you have to look at these fees and go, hmm, maybe they don't wanna do that.
Yeah. That's one way to prevent an annexation. Make the fee so high, it's like, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So do we wanna, do we wanna make a recommendation on a annexation fee then?
Maybe I'll ask why. How these people come up with these numbers? There's gotta be a reason. Thousand dollars, two thousand, three thousand, ten thousand, five hundred.
Coburg, I think, uh, as we previously mentioned, I I don't think they wanna do that, so.
Strategy of.
Yes.
Trying to keep it small.
Yes, exactly.
That's fine, but everybody else has a fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like for city of Philomath, and I was trying, I, one of them started two hundred, one fifteen, I wanna save thirty two on the. It, and so part of that is because the, our engineer has to review it. And then the fee that we pay in agreement with fire department to review public works. Um, sometimes a fee to Benton County for their review on that, if there's any county infrastructure or. It's a large enough in size that the county is gonna have. Huh?
Lawyer too.
And a lawyer too, yeah.
So.
Yeah, it goes very quickly.
You, you could see why there's a thousand at least.
Yep, oh, yeah, easily.
And now on everything in Philomath with those, anything that's quasi legislative or quasi judicial, it's like now the city attorney has to be involved in all of them, so.
Yeah.
That's becoming the, we call the, the norm now, which is essentially just preventing um lawsuit in the future.
We have a suggestion?
Two thousand dollars.
I was just gonna say two thousand dollars.
I don't know how we can do that without, without having some idea of what we're talking about.
Well, now that you know what is involved.
Well, we probably should figure out what our.
But we don't, we don't have any more details on that. We have a rough.
You have no clue what their methodology was compared to thirty two hundred at Philomath.
I know it's based on the fees of all the review groups and attorney, but I don't have like the, what the breakdown is, but I can ask Chris and see if there's a more specific.
What your tiny fee costs every hour? Six hundred?
No, not that much. I wanna say it's probably two, probably two, two hundred dollars an hour or something like that.
Engineer?
Engineer, I don't know, I have to look. We do have a contract in works right now that's, we're close. I, and there is a fee schedule on that. I'd have to look at it, but yeah, there's. I think the attorney is right in that same neighborhood of two hundred bucks an hour.
So I, I'd just like to present a, a suggestion. So a- all of these uh represent. Uh, some sort of uh labor activity by.
Right.
Staff that we have, or in your case, that you're just describing additional labor that we have to hire. And so whoever organizes or coordinates each one of these activities. Can come up with an aggregate estimate of how much that will be.
Yeah.
And then we can then decide if that is an appropriate fee or if we should add some sort of contingency on top of it. But this body has zero information about that, so there's no point in this goofing around trying to come up with some. We're discussing the fact that there is a big variance and that somebody needs to come up with that, and so this, this body can say. We would like to see a list of estimates or, or at least some recommendations of what we think this fee schedule should be. So that we can validate it. So that's what we're doing.
What you need to do is come up, you know, how much, how much? Per hour, let's say everything's per hour and you have your fire chief and you have your engineer and your help, you know.
That's what we just said, yes. We're in radical agreement. That's exactly what we just said, so, so.
You know, one thing that Johnson made sense.
Yes.
If if one or two people. Wanted, as a commission wanted to spend the time to go and.
But we're not, but we don't.
Bring it back to the group.
I think like the cities, the city staff needs to be involved.
Go to the city staff and, and. And get these answers. You know, what's, what are the?
Well, in some cases, just as an F Y I, they've nev- they've never done it, so they have no idea.
Well, they'll know how much.
Well, that's, then, then we can't provide that service if we've never done it and we don't know how to do it.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that they just haven't done it before.
Yeah. Labor intense it's gonna be.
Okay. Suggestion of somebody here is maybe just to coordinate the effort and and. That's your suggestion, okay, that, yeah, that we have.
Well, I would love it if it wasn't me, so just throwing it out there.
Something that the group could prioritize for the new city administrator. I mean, there's.
So, the, the new city administrator, uh, he's gonna be like.
But maybe.
We could have.
A value to wait till he gets here and then have him make a suggestion of how to proceed. Well, and, and then be willing to step in and assist.
I'm thinking.
Is very important.
It is important. I'm just thinking maybe we should have a small group of two or three people that coordinate. And can come back to this body, come back to the city administrator. I just, I'm concerned that he's gonna be overwhelmed.
Right.
Very quickly.
Do we have any volunteers?
I don't wanna chase them off.
Do you have any volunteers to head up that effort?
To help coordinate uh fees and are we, are we doing all fees or water fees and sewer fees?
How often are these revisited? These fees?
Uh, Harrisburg does every year. They look at them. But it's like a broader thing that they look at. They look at all their fees, not just tap fees and. Land use fees. They look at all their fees because labor costs change, materials.
Exactly.
You know, that all changes. So, yeah, they look at it every year.
And city Philomath updates are, are yearly too, even though the applications as a minute, but the other like S D C fees.
Right.
Wars is, is updated yearly.
We got anybody?
I can, I can volunteer. Next few weeks are a little bit difficult, but I can volunteer to coordinate that effort with city staff. I'd like to be able to sit down briefly with the, the new city administrator to get some guidance on how that. Or how, how we'd recommend proceeding.
And I can, I can visit with you if you want.
Great.
And then after July fourth, um Chris will be back, so I can get the breakdown of how city of Philomath came up with those fees. Seeing maybe that methodology might help in, in that conversation to see.
I love it.
So John will head up, I'll assist him.
Who else wants to help out? Oh, I'm gonna help you. Okay, but do we wanna have a third just in case?
I can, I'll throw my hat in the ring.
Okay.
On the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, Eli, the reason why I bring it up is like for the city administrator interviews, we had several city councillors involved in that process. And it just, yeah, more, you know, maybe it's a few more fingers in the pot, but then everybody's got a stake in it and. There and, yeah. Just suggestion.
I like.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna table that for now. We're gonna go. Probably, we already went through all the planning updates, really.
Well, I can kind of do. Because I saw the spreadsheet about planning projects, so I, I can um bridge some gaps and.
Put that spreadsheet together. By no means is it complete. It can be updated, though.
Few um little things to update, and the part I don't know, so on the first one for Steve Rhodes. The part I need to, I I'm gonna have to ask public works about requiring style curb and better because I don't remember it being explicitly. Laid out in the conditions, but what's holding things up right now is that um I need a submitted um final plat of partition. Making sure it conforms that all the conditions of approval are met and the S D C fees are paid before it proceeds. My concern is, is I, I think it was a house or two being, or is it Oaks or his, where houses already being kind of. Foundation already being laid out, so it's, as if building permits have already been submitted, so that I have a little concern, but I know that.
The other is. Port is demo.
Port is demo.
Yeah, so the, and it, and I don't know what for single family dwellings refers to.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, that's like the amount of houses are gonna be, so it's for uh the partition in the four lots, so it's gonna be four houses.
Uh, that wasn't the way that I remembered that partition. The way that I remembered that was, it was two.
Two.
Two lots, and so he partitioned it into two. He's building his house and then he's gonna sell the one next to him.
Yeah, so there's two, so there were two single lots and then the partition each one into two.
I didn't see that.[1743.11]
Yeah, that's how like in the um in the folder, the staff report, that that was how everything was laid out. The conditions are a little nebulous. Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's where that question was like on the sour curb, but I don't have anything to. Trigger it. It's like, if it was up to five, then I'd have a little more, little more say, but with it being two.
I thought it was just two.
It was, it was wider segments is two.
There's gonna be a house and then another house.
Because of the size of the lot.
Yeah.
Well.
There there was only the, we gave him a bear with, no, he does, was it a lot line adjustments or was it a variant?
I think it might have been a lot line adjustment. I don't remember exactly.
It's two lots because one was smaller or something.
Yeah, because the drawings, every draw in the prelim had uh essentially a total of four lots, two of them facing one way and then two facing this where both owned by him. So that's what, so that's and everything in the folder points that I I like the way the conditions of approval were written. I had to like sift through to really get, okay, what what's trying to say? Because it was just kind of a little bit nebulous.
What he's poured looks like a really big building.
Yeah.
Well, keep, there's gonna be a shop also.
Right.
For sure, there's gonna be a shop there.
But but keep this in mind and. When Chuck Schultz met with us. With the new rules. He's not gonna prove anything over three homes. Because he has to personally guarantee. That the water and the wastewater. Uh, is sufficient for, he has to sign personally liable. That if, and so that's where anything under three. Flies under the radar, anything above three, he has to sign that document and he will not sign that document.
And I know on the water, it's gonna be fine because it's like the the pipe was the wrong size or am I getting that confused with oats? I think that's Rose's property, that the pipe was the wrong size. Um, so the city's having the. Update the pipe.
Well, and I think with Mr. Rose, we're also, there's been some question about the SDCs.
Yeah.
Um, Don has been trying to get proof and he's not provided that yet.
It's like I at, it's like at most what I can verify is that maybe he paid half.
Yeah.
That's what Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, but our, but our arm from the moratorium discussion, we've got a six inch wastewater pipe going underneath the long pump.
Yeah.
Like it only handles six hundred gallons. Per minute. And in the winter time, we've got twelve to eighteen hundred gallons. And so we cannot, we cannot authorize. Anything because the second he steps into a subdivision, he has to sign it, so.
Yeah. Is it possible to prioritize that the, that Steve Rose's plans? Be somewhat somehow reviewed.
Well, I think it's him and uh Mr. Oaks and.
Because none of them have submitted final plat, so they're, I mean, it's not a final partition, so. It's kind of weird to me that there's like house being built on there because usually your partition's final, then you're submitting the building.
It's kind of like he's, I for, this is my impression and I'm not saying that this is actually happening, but. Based on our conversation, it seems like he's. He's operating or taking advantage of confusion in this gray area with respect to the city to. Just rush through whatever he's gonna do and hope that.
He'll ask for forgiveness later.
And that's a, it it's problematic because it makes it seem as if this. We have no uh relationship to his project.
So I, so where I'm think the solution's gonna be, so like with respect to how we collect SDC fees. At the building permit phase, and I need to work something out with Lance to make sure that the planner does a review before they approve. Any building permit that the SDC fees are paid and that there isn't any other outstanding conditions of approval to be done. Because right now, those two are kind of separated out enough that at the building permit phase, there isn't that prompt on the Benton County side to. Say, hey, it's like Monroe, it's like, is there anything, uh, does this meet setbacks and all that? I don't think that's even being checked. And and the only reason I say that, there's two other houses that um eight fifty six and eight sixty Orchard have got a question on. And those houses I I can guarantee are not built like both of them are about three and a half, four foot setback. From the lot line and there's an easement running down the middle between the two where the houses are actually in an access easement.
Orches?
Um, eight fifty six and eight sixty Orchard. And this would have happened in nineteen ninety two. So it's like, but I, some of those same mechanisms between county and municipality and it's like and.
It's a failure.
Yeah, there's a, there's a communication failure. So uh so what needs to happen is that I need to have a meeting with Lance. To make sure that I'm on the radar and and in with their e permitting for City of Monroe, so I can then go in and do my sign off. Because that's gonna be the double check that's gonna make sure that we don't have the houses being built before a final part, like the final part partition is approved and recorded. With the county. I think that's, that's where there's that gap and where. That loophole is what's allowing things to kind of people to start building um before everything's finalized. And and there's gonna, there could potentially be issues with that. Um, and I'm shocked that it went that far for the fact that we still don't have a guarantee of. Water and and wastewater capacity as well.
Kind of teeth does the city have to do anything about?
Well, the only teeth that I have is I don't approve the partition, but the, but if the county has already approved the building permit, that's where. It's like now there's not really any teeth except for I can send a note to the county to not allow the certificate of occupancy. Because that if they don't. They, then no one can live there.
And then someone to bring this guy to the table before he spends a.
Yeah.
Way more money.
Yeah, and and there's gonna be, I'm working on a meeting because uh Dawn put something on my radar with him and another person. I need to have them both in the room. For a meeting, it's partially for the SDC fees, but there's another issue with some of the infrastructure, so that's, I've got to bring them in a meeting. I'm hoping uh by the time that happens, Mark will be back because I'd want Mark in that meeting one more time, just to.
And so just for clarification, how many houses he?
Um, to my knowledge, there's gonna be four.
It's just.
I that's really firmly believe that was wanting to be one.
Yeah.
There were gonna be two, then it was one, then he's gonna sell the other one.
Yeah, he might still sell the lots, but perceivably with four lots could build four houses.
But there should be, I mean, there ought to be minutes of what was approved.
Yeah.
And if everyone has the same recollection that it was two and not four.
I'd just like to point out that this is another example of John Greedanis failing to keep track of all of our. And I would like to formally slap his hand and say he needs to do a better job.
And I agree with David that it sooner rather than later before, because then it becomes an issue of.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's like, and I've had to kind of piece together because since that the initial approval was a little farther back, I think that almost in. Late twenty twenty three, early twenty twenty four and the SDC fee has been the.
Well, to get a building permit approved by the county, doesn't he have to show some kind of?
Approval of a plant that he.
Yeah, and and in theory, they should be checking on whether the final plat's been approved. It's like, and I don't, and I don't know.
I think there's always been a disconnect between the city and the county.
Yeah, there has. And I've had to do the same thing with better coordination um uh from the Philomena side. So it's just no matter, I just need to uh like get Lance's ear and meet for like thirty.
Check, Michael, you can just add that one more thing.
One more thing on. But we're, I think.
Must sign off on building permits.
Yeah.
It's like, don't they have a checklist or something with the county?
About that. I sure we, I remember approving that we had this whole thing.
Been beating that one to death.
It's like remonstrances.
I have to, to be able to do since um building permits are all online now for state law. I'm gonna have to have the county give me access as a reviewer, as City of Monroe. To be able to review those building permits because and it's gonna be fun because I already have a Philomena one for e permitting. So uh this will be this unusual circumstance while I break e permitting, having access to two different municipalities.
Can I bring us back to this particular uh property? So that there was a question here regarding sidewalk curb and gutter placement. So um. Uh, who is, are you gonna reach out to them or who's gonna reach out?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I'm gonna bring that up in the meeting. Yeah, I'm gonna bring it up in the meeting, but I need to also talk to Mark about that. Because I think the the gutter part, the curb and gutter, I think is part of some of the infrastructures being put in, but don't quote me on that. That's that's kind of what my rough understanding was, but the sidewalk part, that's the part I don't know.
It makes sense to me that it would just follow the the sidewalk that's already on the adjacent property on Main Street.
Yeah.
Continue that up.
Let's recollect that meeting, if you don't have the meeting, the minutes, but we we was a two, was it two? It was split, there were two partitions. He was gonna build on one and we were requiring curb and sidewalk and gutter on the one he's building. With the understanding that when he built the second one, he would continue that, but he didn't have to do it yet now.
Yeah.
So that that was what. That is how I'm understanding. That wasn't gonna be all four right now kind of thing, so but then.
It was never gonna be four.
Never.
It was never gonna be four. It was one now and a possibility of a second.
And you know what might be causing this confusion is that I think that there might have been an earlier plan that had the fourth.
Well, that might.
I remember seeing that, that's an older idea. They, all all that's been approved is just it to be divided into two properties and he's not building on the one next to Maine. So so the, he's building right now on the one next to, again, Trevin's place, so.
The back and now.
And so that's, and his house is all laid out and they've done two pores already and it's, the bill of the house is growing there, so.
Yeah, that's what has me the most concerned, like why, it's like why.
But it looked like they got all the utilities and everything and they've got the meter main and everything in there, so it's, it looks right.
Sounds like the decisions made, it sounds like you may be looking at an older.
That's very possible, yeah.
And that the the work that we did was, the city administrator never filed new decisions with. Somewhere where people could find. So I will do a little more digging and see, because I had to go off of what was in the folder and make the best.
That's what I did. That's what I did as well.
Old, old plan, so.
And we have not seen anything yet about the park, the other piece of property, have we? The parking lot, nothing's come forward.
No, but that would be the place where this city or the street improvements or the or the relationship to the street. No.
No, so hopefully there's no.
It's over on Kelly or is it somewhere else?
Made the cross from the uh Long Timber.
Yeah, Kelly, okay, yeah.
Okay. Oh, oh Kelly, that's the bounds property is.
That's a different part.
Oh, it's a different problem, okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry to interrupt, so I guess we can move on to the next.
Okay, I will have a meeting with um with Patrick on July eleventh to discuss the um one-time expansion. Um, under SB fifteen thirty seven, how I need to submit the um notice to DLCD and then that'll precipitate everything else. Um, to be able to do that, so but sometime after July eleventh, I will have answers of how we proceed. And I know there's um search had asked about that earlier and was a little antsy. I'm just like, I'm like, well, I can't advise until I have all the. I need to submit it. Because this is a new process for me. This is a new law and that's like I, the submittals different than your typical annexation. So it's like I've got procedure to make sure it's right or otherwise we're, I'm gonna cost more work for the city and I don't want, don't want to do that either.
But Pat, but it sounds like Patrick, despite uh being very eager and willing to help, is kind of a bottleneck in this.
No, I I've been the bottleneck because I got, I got sick, so I've missed. I know, right? And to be sick for, for almost four weeks.
Trick is, is ready to pull the trigger on this.
Patrick's waiting on me at this.
And I know these folks in the audience are too.
Okay.
Fred? Michael, well, first of all, I I'm glad that you're feeling better. We really appreciate your bringing your. Do you know if Serge has provided a general outline? Because I know that that's gonna be part of the process in giving this.
He hasn't yet, or at least I haven't seen it yet. Uh, but it's like for me, it like once I get the information of the procedure of how like. Because I'm thinking it's gonna have to be city initiated, we can still work with um with Serge on, on getting what the outline's gonna be and the meets and bounds of it. Uh, but procedure, I need a person to even know how we have to submit it, so that.
It sounds like it's really, I I talked to him last week and it sounds like he's really.
Yeah.
Um, but he mentioned something about, he he had asked if. We knew anything about the Benton County's requirements that is Mark Rose, so and I don't know if Serge had meant with.
And and that'll be like a pre-application meeting that's gonna have to happen. Gordon and yeah, Gordon will be the main one I'll have to get from Benton County. And probably also have to get uh Lance Richardson, the building official in that because. That's like, I know that there have been concerns from a previous building official on um soil and making sure that. Yeah, absolutely. I'm finding out where this is. So I think once, so I think the game plan's gonna be, once I get. Procedure or what I need to do to submit for Patrick, then I need to get, have Serge give me just a general what the meets and bounds are and and boundaries. So then I have enough for the pre-application meeting for annexation and and then can get the right people in there to make sure that everything from the county side. Is fine because we'll have to make sure they're on board um with that with respect to who's gonna maintain the roads and things like that.
Well, and I, and I think another thing is, is Patrick has grant money access to a lot of.
Yes.
For this.
Yeah, that's why I'm one.
Does she need to ask for it?
Yeah, and like that was the other piece of the question, like, okay, what, like with this, what application do I need to submit for for the grant? And because usually that's done like that, like city administrator levels, like for submitting those grants and and not usually the planner. But I think in this case, that's why I'm gonna get the guidance because I have without the city administrator, it's probably gonna be me as zoning official. That's gonna have to submit, yeah.
No, fourteenth, this is first day.
And probably a little bit overwhelming. It's like I might have to.
Really encouraging that the cities' costs can be covered.
Yeah.
With a lot of these grant funds. And some of the grant funds are also for the developer, but there are to help the cities with these processes.
Because the other thing I'm gonna ask him about is like, because what caused the capacity issue for wastewater in general? Um, after the recalculation is that there were supposed to be a pedestrian bridge that's the, that um was gonna go across and then. For trails around the lagoons, but the grant application was never submitted. And what, and yeah, and so I've gotta see if is there a way with SB fifteen thirty seven that we can exclude that? And or as a, as a secondary piece, because if that, if that's the biggest barriers, housing production. Then we really need to focus on that piece because that could stop everything.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
We can do that.
So that's kind of the.
For infrastructure and saying, I mean, he said there was many.
That's good to know. I'm hoping he just lays out, like, tell me what to do and apply and then I'm gonna get it done and. And then hopefully my Chris. So it's like, yeah, so it's just a matter of getting the time, getting or like making sure that I've got my timeline, timeline set, so everything can go seamlessly.
For one, for one time.
He's been pretty good. It's um one of the others. But that's more applied. You're welcome.
So we have a couple of conversations going on. Sorry, I know the recording will be fun later on.
Okay, so Oaks property, I am, let's see, I, I need to confirm the SDC fees are paid on that one. I don't see anything in the folder.
How many permits are out right now?
Um, let's see, the ones that are submitted that um, so the um, search to um, they have their applications. And so that permits and process the.
They haven't got official permit yet.
Um, well, they've submitted the subdivision out, yeah, no building permits. I mean, we're we're still at the zoning um permit side, but he submitted um. Submitted four partitions and a variance, but really it needs to be a subdivision and I. It with the conversation, it looks like the variance is gonna be moot. I just need to confirm that. So that one's gonna be where I'm finishing the completeness review and hoping to get him notice of whether I need anything else or it's ready. So um to get that scheduled for planning convention and all the the notice, the respect.
Even Steve Rose doesn't even have a per- permit to build yet.
Yeah, Steve Rose is like, it was just, he had the partition approved with conditions, not all the conditions are met yet. So really, he, there shouldn't, if the practice was done correctly, the building permit should never have been issued from the county. But if the county's not communicating with us, then and and I, and I, that's where it's like, he probably just showed that he got the partition approved with conditions. And they just stopped it, stopped at that, which in that's been, I I, there's been some communications where it's getting better with the county. But I need to lay out and get it up on the same page for process, so that way they, in this particular case, I need access to e permitting. For Benton County side as a reviewer to be able to actually say yes or no on those things and that hasn't happened yet. So that's the, that's the, the, where the loophole is at right now that I'm, I'm hoping will be remedied by the end of this month. Because the ads like that's, we don't want to have that as 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 continuing because it it will cause problems. But for Oaks, um, I confirming that all the SDC fa- fees are paid, I'm not. But for Oaks, um I confirming that all the SDC fees are paid, I'm not certain on that. Um but there there are some changes that they submitted a proposed final plat, there were some. Things that were incorrect on it, so I'm waiting on a resubmital because it didn't meet the conditions of approval.
So county can go ahead and and give permits for all these things as long as they've paid their SDCs?
Yeah, and it's like, in in the end, what I what I want to happen and it's like is where. Once everything looks good to go on a on the building permit side, that's the time that they need to pay the SDC fees and so where I. Uh or planner, if it ends up being someone after me, can hold uh hold that up is say. That well, we'll approve pending they pay the SDC fees and that'll be the trigger and they can get it to us. Alternatively, you can have, it would be a county uh city agreement on them reimbursing us for SDC fees. But I would recommend that we we can still have them pay us directly the SDC fees at the point that. Their building permit is ready for approval.
So the city needs to set a moratorium on building and what's that gonna do for the city if they keep handing out permits?
Yeah, that's 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 a very valid question.
That's a great question.
We haven't decided there's a moratorium and we haven't notified the county yet, so until that's done, it's a moot point.
Yeah, and I'll have to, once I do, I'll have to contact Lance and Gordon ASAP on that.
Then it's a conversation.
Set the record straight, did he? There's a six inch pipe that goes under the the river that is capacity filled.
And there's also the water treatment plant that we haven't talked about.
Well, we we. Talked about the.
It's the engineer of record is the key issue.
That's correct.
We don't have the engineer record, and so as soon as we get that done, then he can review everything and then.
That's correct.
It's in his court.
But these guys.
Saying I will not sign off on anything over three homes at a time. Because he has to sign something guaranteeing that he guarantees the water in the wastewater. He's refusing to do that because of liability, so the engineer record needs to review because there have already been feasibility studies done. The engineer of record needs to come in and go, okay, here's the design to remedy both these these issues. And here are your potential funding avenues.
Here's a great legal conundrum, so if I'm a homeowner and I've gotten a a building permit that's okay to build. And then after the and I start my construction and then after the fact, you tell me, no, 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 now I'm gonna hold.
Right.
Responsible, I just see legal.
Right. They haven't been approved yet, they haven't even been met on yet.
Right.
So but these 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 other small ones are.
So there's only one person with a building permit right now, but none of these other people have building permits and. Rose.
Rose.
He's the only person that 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 happened and the other people do not have building permits and won't be able to get building permits and we. And and he may be following.
We don't know that because we we have no control over the building permit right now.
Yeah.
It's the county.
Well, the work required has not been done by the city side yet on the rest of it, so we think the work might have been done. For Steve Rose, but we have, we don't know.
Well, yeah, but I would have thought that I would have thought that the county would have checked with the city before Rose as well, so that's not a guarantee.
He probably got a signed statement from the city administrator saying that all the work was done.
Remember, all this stuff started with Steve and I'm sure Steve. He rose the blessing.
Right.
Oaks hadn't finished his yet.
And we know Michael will not send a letter to the county saying it's okay, so for now.
We we trust.
Well, it's like, and I have a good working relationship now with Lance, it was a rough start with Flometh at first when he became interim building official, but. And changing how when we collect the SDC fees will solve the problems, we have a solution. Yeah, so making sure I get access to e permitting, which I have to do for the county as as uh as representative for Monroe.
On the. I'm sorry, on the Chemex and Nanu property, that was the people that were gonna build for the in-laws.
Yeah.
Red Hills and.
So there may, this may actually no longer be, um what was stopping it is that um Chuck Shoals. There was a a private easement that was running on the backside where the water and sewer go through, Chuck would not sign off because you can't have. Or sewer going through a private easement, the easement was a leftover um from a previous plat that just never got removed. And so I need to confirm that the removal was recorded because it would have been done with separate instrument. I think it was, so if that is the case, they'll be, I'll I'll be able to contact them saying we can proceed with.
I mean, that's been like a year and a half easily.
Yeah, and they haven't really contacted, which is kind of weird and I've been.
Because it was for in-laws, it was for our parents, I thought, they're not getting any younger.
Yeah, so it's like that one's pretty close, once I have that confirmed, I can then say, okay, we can, we we can now proceed again. Because I think the um easement was.
There's more water sewage.
Um, let's see, so I have to follow up on five 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 depot on that, I don't have any. In in my brain right now, nothing.
Do you have a.
Jody Khan.
Oh, Jody Khan, oh, I do have an update on that one.
Let's let's just try to go through it, so just to go back, Brian Oaks, everything is set with that, sit, we don't have any other than. Cause I saw somewhere that the fire department people reviewed that, or no, I guess that was another.
Oh, bounds, yeah, fire department reviewed the bounds townhomes.
Just Brian Oaks, are we all set with six forty depot bay?
I still need to confirm all the SDC fees are paid because I didn't see anything in the folder, they have not submitted a final, they did submit a final plat, but it. It meet the conditions of approval.
Okay.
So they're they're redrawing that and I don't. Yeah.
Nothing, okay.
Yeah, nothing on that one.
And then Kelly Street.
Let's see, Kelly Street, so Browns?
Yeah.
So this is a question I have for the commission. Uh when I look through the staff report and and then the decision for the conditional use permit because it's like, it originally is for four. Four units, um it looks like was the presumption those were gonna be rented. I just found out today from Benton County, they submitted a building permit application. For three townhomes, which that was the plans that the fire reviewed, but they it's gonna be for ownership and not rental. So how that's looked at, uh with looking at the conditional use permit, it's like it was all presumed that it was gonna be. Functioning as those two lots are function as a single zoning lot, they're rentals, so there wouldn't need to be. Any partitioning of the lots, but if they're three townhomes, the only way I can see that they could proceed forward would, they would have to. Do some like some sort of replat that the building is three tax lots and then a common lot with um HOA CCR. But then will that trigger enough of a modification that's gonna have to go back through to get an updated conditional use permit, so that's.
Yeah, because there'll be three water meters and everything.
Yeah, so that changes the scope a little bit, so I'm waiting on the county to submit, like, give me the piece of like how their scope of work and. Building permit, so I can see what's going on, but they red flagged, it's like, well, this would need to be more than one lot, I'm like. Yeah, for three townhomes and with the different ownership, yes.
So in that case, permits weren't issued, they're waiting.
Yeah, so that one's gonna have a kind of a hold of anything and it may have to come back to us. Um, the only way I can see that we could get around that uh with based on what was already approved, if it was a rent to own. And the current owner is still owning the property outright, then for the short term, there would be a case, but then we're gonna have to have some sort of agreement. That go post-planning would be like with the city and the property owner of when to submit. A partition, it gets messy, but it's like you'd have to have a recorded agreement um if we proceed with that, but it's like if it really is that they're. Expecting those to be owned separately, then I think that we would have to go back and redo the conditional use permit based on the new. Scope and parameters and probably a partition to go along with them.
And I just, I just, I wanna bump, I missed one here, just a couple, one question on the five, the depot. Not not Bay. We just heard that she has not, I thought I heard today she has not filed partition application.
And she can't find the application, but.
She hasn't, she hasn't filed yet.
These one provided to her.
Yeah. Look and see what's all in the folder because I thought there was a partition approval.
There there, so this is what you were bringing up, which was, and part of the confusion, sounds like this is. Restarting the thing with Bluebird that got shut down.
Bluebird Winery was gonna be in the front. They got ill, they're selling the winery.
So they pulled back and then.
Yeah, but there's something new going on.
Then there's. That's right.
I did not have that context, now 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 my brain's.
First it was Paulson.
Yeah.
Was applying for theirs and then Bluebird was taking over, they were remodeling it and then it got flooded. Ruined their their plan and then, but their plan was there was gonna be a shop behind. Where people could do like farmer's market or whatever type of business was gonna be back there.
That was the basaraba concept.
Right, so.
We don't know what the new one is.
Well, the the new one now is partition and selling the one partition to the existing business person, I believe. And but that work is up and who done? To whom? The current business trucks. Yeah, but there's an easement going through there, too, that has to be dealt with. Do a new pre-op meeting for that one, now that I have that context, we're back at square one.
So my question is, if they, if the partition process for the commercial lot like that, does that come before the planning commission?
Yes, it uh partition is a type two, yeah, would go before the planning commission.
That that partition could raise a lot of questions about.
And keep in mind that Rose, Steve Rose also owns. That part of that property of of. So he owns that.
Oh, he does, okay.
The trucking business.
Yeah, that that application is pending and a partition application we have to come before the planning commission, once they she files.
Sounds like we're gonna need a new new pre-op meeting so I can get a scope of everything and then deal with any easements and see how to proceed with that.
Well, and that you just to, just I think to echo John's point, which is. That property has been kind of fraught and going through all these different kind of permutations, but. The interest to the this commission is that it's the very heart of the city and like a very important. Very, very important piece of real estate in terms of dictating the uh how the city. Uh grows and works and all of that stuff, so I think that's.
Some of the Riverside District. No, it was not.
But we can discuss it, but it needs to be something that's just not kind of like a like kick, just kick down the road.
Maybe get rid of the truck stop, who knows in the discussion, it's like that could be.
Well, that that's why I was hoping, those are the kind of things you have, whenever it comes forward, there's there's some loaded, there's some. Some dynamics there have to be discussed.
We have any questions when uh for pre-op meeting, I'll just do an email to you all of like some of those concerns, so I can. Maybe get those brought up in a pre-op meeting and then and so when they do a resubmital. May get something that's closer to conforming with 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 adjusting those concerns. Because I like to identify those issues early and that's and pre-op means done correctly, you identify those issues, so then when something's coming before the. Planning Commission, it's hopefully has flushed out most or all of those concerns. Okay, so Jody Khan's property, that is changing because what stopped that is that um. The zoning verification letter never got to him in time to get to a lender, so the house is an all-invent. What he's wanting to do now, um he's working on a new proposal because the Conex containers. He wanted to put in the fenced area of their storage is an absolute no per the fire department. So he's working on possibly using where the house is at, demoing the house and then creating. The Conex containers in a row there, but that's gonna trigger some screening and probably a little bit of landscaping and then. Making sure that it meets all the fire requirements, so he's supposed to be submitting at some point. A new rough proposal, I'm gonna at least run it by the fire department, like, does this meet fire? Because if the answer is no, then. I don't even want to do a pre-op meeting or anything like that. I just want it, it's like, but he was much more amenable once I said, well. Because of this unfortunate situation, now you have the opportunity to do that here because it sounds right and. It's like, yeah, it's like for the Conex containers, that's the only spot he could possibly promise about where the house is at, but he's gonna have to do it in a very specific way. With setbacks and screening to make sure it doesn't affect um neighboring properties.
Our Conex boxes uh correlated to tax and. On a tax base for Monroe, how's it gonna benefit Monroe?
Yeah.
And the look for the Riverside District.
Because the only, because I'm when I'm looking through the overlay district and the only thing since. It doesn't quite reach the bar because the cost of the Grice containers doesn't reach that threshold of substantial redevelopment. All I can do is conditions that it has to look like the existing building that's there like color what color and scheme wise. That's about the only thing I can see that I can enforce based on what value the the cons containers are not that expensive, so that's so. The amount of potential like the cost of. That compared to the assessed value, it's like.
He's using the Conex containers for storage units, is that what he's using it for?
It's like, but I'll have to be where that, over that.
Where the mobile, the manufacturer.
How's the neighbor's gonna think about that?
No, no, at least get to say any concerns and 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 that's where I'm like, I'm like there and I I did say that to him in in our. After I said, well, this the original proposal is a definite no-go for the fire department. That um he's gonna have to consider screening and possibly some landscaping around that because, yeah, we don't want where it's gonna. Impact traffic and there's one area, if he puts it in that way, it's gonna be the least impactful, but I've gotta see if. That's what comes about, but I did kind of give, if you're gonna go with a proposal, you might want to think about this access drive and using it and loop around. And then the Conex containers in the middle and then screening, and so that's kind of.
That is full with uh deal with Conex boxes.
Um for Lushwab, it was allowed, this is where I got in a little um kerfuffle with the uh building official. Um with um Benton County is like, it's like it didn't, they didn't go through the building permit in the proper process, so it was the opposite where I'm like. I didn't know temporary containers needed it if it was outside of the floodplain. So that that was something new to me, it's like, but it makes sense, it's like, it's gotta be able to withstand sixty mile an hour wind, so it's gotta be anchored, it's gotta be on a concrete. Concrete pad, even though for um in this case it was Lushwab and Flometh, it's temporary until they build a new building that's gonna store.
Basically warehouse.
Yeah, it's just temporary until they they get the funds from corporate to to build.
Concept of a used storage boxes for shipping containers.
Yeah.
Storage units.
Yeah.
It's not something they're gonna tax as a business.
Yeah, yeah, it's just store, yeah, it's just.
But down here, you wanna use it for a business.
Yeah, where it's accessory, so at least still like storage in the industrial zone isn't allowed. Use, so unless uh the overlay district said that no more storage, there's not like from the planning perspective, I can't say. He can't do that, but we can't put conditions on.
The city of Monroe has a so little commercial.
Yeah.
Along the highway, it's just, it's a real big bummer in my opinion, so.
And it's and things like from a, like at the city council level and the and planning commission is something to think about, it's like. For that district, what is the intent of it? Like if it's redevelopment for commercial and being the gateway so people stay and whatnot, then. It's like, are we wanting to have industrial and like storages and industrial use, wanting that there because with the existing overlay district. There's nothing that's telling me I can't or that it can't be done because commercial and industrials kind of morph together is allowed use in in. In that overlay district for industrial, so that that's kind of when I peeled all the layers back, I'm like, well, there isn't anything that says that. Storage can't be done in this context, but that's something I think if that's going against the vision of Monroe, then that's something that. That might need a bigger discussion on how to do that, so that way there is that cohesive along the highway corridor.
Talk about that next meeting.
Yeah, so uh his plan three would be, have to come back to the.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, and it's it's gonna be a site design review and it'll have to go before the planning commission.
Great.
We did surge already and we did the.
Yeah.
Brickyard.
And then yeah, brickyard I talked about, station four five six, I need the.
Before we get past the brickyard, this this uh discussion that was brought up that you guys were talking about with. Mine and the supply of uh industrial zone property. Um I don't remember us ever having a conversation about that, that was news to me.
Yeah.
So I I'm, I wondered uh if that was something that we could put on the agenda for our next meeting.
Absolutely, and it's like, and maybe even forget Patrick in here on that too, it's like the, because that to my understanding. And this was my time also doing things in the Dare Village, if you break the inventory, either twenty year on housing or on industrial, commercial. You're in violation of because of the Oregon land use law, because each municipality within the Irma Grath County has to have a twenty year inventory of all of those things. Regardless of whether that's the best land or not, that that part is just you have to have that land.
Yeah.
Available within the. So the. Yeah, a good chunk, yeah. Yeah, a good chunk, yeah. And with everything that's in that overlay district, there isn't really any functional. Uh industrial land and and I would argue like with how the overlay, you wouldn't want that anyway. Um but that part that's outside of the overlay that's industrial, that's zoned industrial, so until.
I mean, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Good location for it.
Could it theoretically be rezoned because it's adjacent to that? Yes, it could be, however. The challenge is if they don't, yeah, it's the inventory, that's that that's. Yeah.
And if, and to to this guy Chet's point. Then uh if we, it sounds like the the city needs to. Develop some kind of strategic vision with respect to how we are uh facilitating.
Yeah.
Any movement of that.
Yeah.
That that zone around within the UGB, right?
Yeah, and it's like in.
And we haven't done anything like that.
Yeah, and it's like, and that's where I'm like, possibly, there was an email that Dan had sent to me about um. Would like some help from DLCD on like reviewing the development code. And I said, it's like, even though it's from a housing production perspective, I think there's going to be some value to that and it wouldn't cost the city any money. And it's like that we we should um go.
We need to have that.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's that's going to be a piece that helps too. The part I don't know, so this is the part I didn't say in that discussion because it's it's, I think, a little premature for me to even assert it. Is, has the state's perspective changed with the pressure for housing production? With respect to a reason of something adjacent and possibly not having twenty years of industrial land. I don't know the answer to that question, but it's like from a, like how it's traditionally been done with like Oregon land use law. It's like I, it's like I would be very trepidatious to 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 do that. Even if 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 the concept was much more flush and had more commercial or like um industrial. And like a live work kind of thing, it's like there might have been some wiggle room to to make that work, but at on its face, I I. It it's so much residential, not enough with it within that zone, and so it's like I. And like the amount that they provided for business space and industrial space was so. Small in comparison to everything, so I think if they made it like seventy thirty with some. Commercial and industrial, I think there would have been some wiggle room to be able to to work with it and. So it's like, I'm hoping that sound like not a no, it's just like they're going to have to rethink their plan a bit and be more strategic. On trying to do something similar, but change the layout or whatnot and add more. And I I think they don't want to add more commercial or or light industrial.
It might be another developer that.
Yeah.
Be doing this.
Okay, but it's kind of shocking that it's like that hadn't come up before, but it's.
Yeah.
But I'm, in previous planners, I don't know if they had to study all of the Oregon rainy slot classes, I mean, I I did all of them.
So is the question of industrial set aside, is it industrial, commercial or those two separate things? So much commercial, so much industrial.
So much commercial, so much industrial, yeah, so it's like a combination of everything and I would say, do we even have twenty year inventory and commercial is another valid question right now.
Mm hmm, yeah.
And I think we're having the overlay district to the, if the overlay district was to the river. Then this this project would have been perceivably could go. But then the other thing is like, even if all that was good to go, it's like, and it was work, a reason on the residential, we had the twenty year inventory. Then you run into the issue of the one time overlay expansion where we would then be a no versus a yes, so that that's another layer. But we don't even get to that because there's the 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 issue with that's industrial. Land right now and they, unless they can show that they can provide something with to keep to the twenty year inventory, I I don't have any. I wouldn't be able to approve it and the state would be able to object even if I did.
All right. Any other questions, any other comments?
Food cart's going to go in over here.
Where. I think she's working on it right now. I forgot the water part.
And despite all this, the finds, I feel like I've 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 done very little of getting things to a finished line.
Talk of a ten inch sewer line that comes down. That was a six inch line anyways.
But it's ten, I think it's ten inch, uh you said south of Lovin Field. To where all those hydrants and stuff are.
Regardless, it's inadequate.
It's inadequate because when it hits the.
I think that's that's inadequate and then that's a whole nother issue.
And is Loving, I didn't look at the, is Loving's property industrial?
I thought it was. It makes a commercial and residential.
Yeah, the loving's mostly industrial and then the other one is mostly the GRB residential or I'm, or do I have that flipped around?
No, yeah, the one was Brickyard.
Brickyard industrial and loving.
But I heard, I heard somebody mention that Loving property was industrial, I thought it was all commercial and residential.
Yeah, there's some, there's some industrial in that.
There is, yeah, yeah.
And and then I am going to definitely bring up the question to Patrick about the bridge that never got built. And whether that could be part of SB fifteen thirty seven to provide the sewer capacity and resolve the issue for housing production.
That was all a big issue for us.
As Chuck pointed out, that creates a whole years and years worth of permitting. Versus just boring a new hole underneath.
Well.
Yeah, the boring, expanding the size of the existing.
Bursting the existing.
Yeah. We're talking three million for the bridge, we're talking.
And just the time.
So the, I'm not sure about the permitting, that's why we need to, so I'm saying the permitting, what we've, when we worked with the Army Corps on. If if it's, the permitting for the bridge was some set like less complicated. Than permitting for the boring under the river.
Well, a new hole. Yeah, a new hole under the river was going to be way complicated, expanding the size of the current hole. Which was the the easiest.
Path of least resistance, no.
Were they worried about?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a perspective about the Chuck opinions, so I don't know Chuck very well. Uh based upon his last, the last meeting, I do know that uh the suggestion that we have a second opinion. Engineers on everything that he's saying makes total sense rather than us taking it to the bank necessarily. From one expert because that's also how we got into the whole trouble with.
Yeah.
You know who, so maybe we don't just jump to conclusions based upon what somebody says, so.
First and foremost, engineer of record.
That's right. Everybody needs to double check each other.
Yes.
Well, the bottom line.
Oh, really? Okay.
So if he doesn't sign off, then we don't get anything.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We adjourn.